I now call to order the December 13th, 2021, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:01 PM. Let the minute show that a quorum is present with all members in attendance and two absent. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Turner.
(inaudible) Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the heat of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna skip item two for right now and go to item three for recognitions. Ms. Monroe will present the holiday cards.
Good evening. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to highlight a few of our extraordinarily talented artists. This year's annual holiday art card contest consisted of a total of 109 entries. Tonight, we are excited to present the winning artwork in each of our four categories: high school graphic design, high school original art, middle school original art, and elementary school original art. At this time, I would like to welcome the following three students up to the front: The graphic design winner is Dulce Loyola. Dulce is an 11th grader from Porter High School. Her teacher, Mrs. Nelda Taylor, describes Dulce as "a diligent worker who wants her work to be perfect." She is an Adobe Certified Associate in Photoshop and is always willing to do projects that take extra time outside of class time. Unfortunately, Dulce and her family were unable to attend tonight, but we congratulate her just the same. Our elementary school original art winner is Brookwood Forest Elementary 5th Grader Natalia Saavedra. Natalia's art teacher, Mrs. Jordan Goodrum, speaks very highly of her. She states, "Originally from Columbia, Natalia Saavedra is new to New Caney ISD. She enjoys Brookwood Forest and drawing along with art videos. Natalia comes from a family that encourages entrepreneurship." Our middle school original art winner is Kiefer Crossing Middle School 6th Grader, Christian Borski. Christian is taught by his mom, Mrs. Stephanie Borski, who describes Christian, the student, as "hardworking" and the type of student that takes his time. Most of his art reflects his love for the outdoors. He is a straight A student who wants to be a game warden when he grows up. Finally, the winner in the high school original art category is Alyssa Gonzalez. Alyssa is a 10th grader at Porter High School. Her art teacher, Mr. Wilfredo Panade, says Alyssa is "an excellent art student who is focused and always open to investing time into her art." She is currently working on pieces for both the Houston and Austin rodeo art. Congratulations to all our winners. I want to personally thank you again for the opportunity to highlight these young artists, and from all of the New Caney ISD fine arts teachers, we thank each of you for your support and wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
They're amazing. Now Ms. Trish Beal will recognize Infinity Early College.
Just hold the applause. Thank you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to recognize the faces of Infinity's campus. And what we say, what we do best is take care of business. So first, to my left is Ms. Lorinda Gonzalez. Ms. Lorinda Gonzalez is formerly known as "the face of Infinity," the person who greets every person who walks through the door with a smile on her face and is always quick to say, "My pleasure." It was time for a change into upper professional game, so we challenged Ms. Gonzalez and asked her to move into the position of Registrar, bless her heart, counselor and AP Secretary in college book extraordinaire because on our campus you wear multiple hats. She has managed the change seamlessly and is not afraid to continue to ask questions to get better. She loves Wonder Woman and she is exactly that, our Wonder Woman. Lorinda, you will forever be the face of Infinity and my deputy dog. Thank you for all that you do. Ms. Choate, if you know something about our school, you know that we are organized chaos, emphasis on organized. Nothing about Infinity screams day to day the same. One constant, though, is Nicole, our cafeteria manager. Ms. Choate brings a sense of consistency into our world that is constantly in flux. The cafe team is always accommodating and Ms. Choate never balks at the ideas we throw at her, and we throw quite a few. We completely appreciate your willingness to adapt to the Infinity way. Year after year, we change it up, but you still continue to show up and make the food magic happen. Have you ever worked for someone that is very particular about how things look and that everything has a place? That's me. So you can only imagine when Mr. Randy Quendoy showed up, our now head custodian, two weeks before school started and having to learn a new system. This guy is amazing. Not only did I notice him adapt, I saw him too share the same little quirks of tidiness. I knew at that moment, this is my guy. He's a keeper, I told Ms. Sykes. During the first few weeks, Randy showed great resilience as the face of the custodial crew morphed into a brand-new crew. He never blinked. Randy led his team and showed them the ropes. Mr. Quendoy is always two steps ahead of me, planning, and I'm thankful for that because he keeps me in line. Randy, we're happy to have you and your team as part of our family, and tonight we celebrate you and your leadership. You can give the flowers to your wife. And you look nice. Okay. So folks, this is one of those full-circle moments when you know you're getting old. So standing before you, the small one next to Randy, is, she hates when I do this, the valedictoring of the first Infinity graduating class of 2017. And now I'm gonna get mushy, Scott Castleberry, so just, he picks on me. Ms. Camilla, oh, and she's also a Texas Aggie. Can I get it? Thank you, thank you. I was her counselor at the time of her high school graduation, but I'm happy to say that I got a chance to hire her as a principal. I knew Camilla as a student, and she clearly crushed it, but walking into the classroom as a first-year teacher during a pandemic, teaching virtually and face-to-face, I was a little concerned. Side note, no pressure, I pulled her into my office and said, "Hey, Mr. Wawie is retiring. I need you to get your masters." She didn't balk. I'm lost my place. Anyways, "I need to get you masters." Okay. Like in the Instagram, the here's and the now, this is what's happening now. Camilla is an innovative educator that understands the importance of making connections and building relationships with staff, community, and her students, most importantly. Ms. Maya is always thinking outside the box and looking for ways to support and challenge her students. Her passion is contagious and her love for the kids, and being an educator is a joy to watch. I literally sit back and watch and think how lucky we are to have her. Camilla, I'm so happy to be on this journey together and watching you grow from a student to professional has been one of my greatest joys. Thank you. Now I'm all messed up. They're gonna be laughing back there. Okay, now for the fun stuff. I simply love recognizing our students. While I appreciate the chance to highlight our adults on our campus, our students deserve the accolades because they get us to where we are and give us all the credit and whatnot. So it goes without saying, I wish I could recognize everyone, but these three, I'm happy to look forward to here. So Louis. Louis, on the far end down there, Luis, he's our fine arts recipient, and he's a sophomore, Luis Olivera, a dedicated individual in academics and extracurricular activities. We don't have a fine arts department, but our students do have to take fine arts to graduate with their associate's degree, so this is from his professor who teaches Arts 1301. Louis declared that he was not an artist. After thinking about that, he realized that he was presented with yet another challenge, and if you know anything about Luis, he walks around school with a backpack full of books held by one little zipper, and he's gonna make that work. He thought he wasn't an artist, but with the liberties of an artistic media at hand, Luis utilized elements and principles of the art learned in class and put them on paper. The impact of part of this story is that while he was creating, Luis gained the attention of his peers as he completed his work during the lunch hour. Many surrounded him as if he were like an artist in New York City. Mr. Davis, his Arts 1301 professor, stated, "Luis started an artistic movement within the school in which students shared emotions, feelings, skill, abilities, and even challenges in an avant-garde way of expression." Standing to Louis's right, y'all's left, is junior Taylor Gomez. She's being recognized as our CTE student. As many of you well know and are well aware, we have former students in the district that went through our teaching program and connected with Texas Tech to only graduate a year after high school and then a year after their graduate program, or their, what is it, their college program, to end up teaching at age 19. Well, Taylor is on that same track right now. She's also involved in our edut courses on campus and at Lone Star. She also is an accomplished Taffy member. Last year, she placed second in public speaking at the national level, and this year she has qualified for state in the public speaking. Our Taffy sponsor stated, "Taylor really takes pride in her work and her craft. She is determined to be the best and works diligently on everything she does." Taylor is also not only one of the strongest academic students on our campus, but she also shines brightly in her extracurricular activities. Taylor holds an office in Stuco and is also one of our star athletes. Though she's not our athlete up here, she is one of our athletes. So Taylor's coach stated, "Taylor is one in a million. She is smart, competitive, respectful, responsible, and a leader." She's a captain on the girls' cross-country team, and no one works harder than Taylor. So congratulations, Taylor Gomez. And side note, we won cross-country this year. And last but not least, our highlight athlete is junior cross-country captain Leslie Navarro. Leslie has a story. Leslie served as a team's manager her freshman year. Leslie served, when she was as the manager, she said, "Hmm, I think I can do this," when she saw her brother go to state. So the one she wondered if anybody knows anything about him. That very same year, she watched her brother go to state, and she said, "I think I'm gonna go to state." So this year, we were all psyched that we're going to state, but the girls brought home the district championship, and as a junior, we expect to see our girls go back. So I expect this time next year, I'm gonna be pulling her back up here congratulating her going to state, right, Leslie? Yes. Okay. She placed in the top half at regionals but fell short on her state goal, but knowing Leslie, I imagine we'll be doing the same thing again. Her coach said that there are not many high school cross-country runners that could honestly say that they love to run, but Leslie is an exception. When she wants to do something fun, she runs. When she wants to feel happy, she runs. And if you ever get to see her run in competition, she always has a smile on her face. But what we know about her is walking the halls every day, she always has a smile on her face, and that's how we know her. So congratulations, Leslie.
All right, up next is Mr. Holton with New Caney High School.
It is my pleasure today to introduce our fantastic students and staff. One thing you'll notice, they all have fantastic smiles, and I'm pretty sure they're all cowboy fans, so they, fantastic group of people up here. Beside me, our female athlete, Abigail Dittman. Abby is one of those people you just can't help but love. She is relentless in her pursuit of excellence on the court and off of it. Abby is one of those students who seeks out administrators just to ensure that they are having a great day every day and to give them her famous fist bump. She speaks up when it is necessary and becomes an excellent ambassador for students across our campus while maintaining an uncanny level of respect for everyone around her. Abby's an excellent basketball player who doesn't know how to not hustle or give everything that she has every second of her day. More importantly, she is tenacious when it comes to her Christian faith, and her genuine love for all shows in every interaction she has with both staff and students alike. Abby truly makes a life-changing difference in people's lives every single day. Cornelius Banks, our male athlete. We're so proud of Cornelius, not only because of the type of player that he was on the field, but who he is as a person. The motto for our football program is "Uncommon Men Win." He exemplifies what it truly means to be uncommon by the way he lives his life and how he treats those around him. It was no surprise that his teammates elected him as team captain, and he had led our team on the field, in the locker room, as well as on campus. His character was not just noticed by his teammates and coaches, but by his teachers and classmates as well. One of his teachers wrote, "Cornelius is a role model student-athlete. Comes to class each day ready to work and learn. He completes all of his assignments on time. He's always a gentleman and respectful to his peers and to his teachers. Yes, he is intelligent, but his personal character is one of the things that stands out the most about him." Our fine arts student, Hannah Sharp. Hannah Sharp is a dedicated student, not only in fine arts, but in all of her pursuits. She works hard in every one of her classes and holds herself to high standard of excellence. Hannah is heavily involved as a leader in both choir and theater arts. She's often the first and most enthusiastic participant in any activity and sets a positive example for every student around her. Hannah is a member of three of the four New Caney High School choirs and participates in all extracurricular activities related to choir. She's also president of theater arts and a member of one-act play ensemble. Along with being a great student, Hannah is kind and welcoming to anyone who crosses For our CTE student, Ricardo Berrios. Ricardo is a true team player who motivates and drives his team towards success. His tenacity and leadership amongst his peers have earned him respect and praise in running the NCHS Garden Bistro on our campus. Ricardo's dedication to providing the school and NCISD staff a great culinary experience in the bistro ensures that every customer who leaves our bistro is full and satisfied. Ricardo makes a point to personally check on and thank all who visit the NCHS Garden Bistro, adding to the personal touch he strives to ensure that every one of our guests experiences. Also makes a great buttermilk pie. All right, now to our child nutrition employee, Concepcion Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez is a very loyal, dependable, hard worker. She goes above and beyond daily for students and staff. She's very knowledgeable, friendly, and personable to all the kiddos. She engages daily and makes sure not one of our students goes unnoticed. We are honored to have such an amazing, selfless woman to be a part of our team here at New Caney High School. For our custodian, Angelina Rivera Rosales. Ms. Rosales is one of the very first custodians to show up in our building every single morning. It's a race usually between her car and mine, yet she does it with a happy disposition and genuine smile on her face. In fact, I've never spoken to her or witnessed someone else speaking with her where she's just not smiling. She loves what she does and loves who she graciously serves. Ms. Rosales is always willing to help when needed, and we are thankful to have her on For our paraprofessional, Yvonne Ochoa. Ms. Ochoa has made an immediate impact since the day that she came on our campus. She passionately works with our newcomers students and provides instructional support for all of our English language learners. Her infectious smile provides an aura of calm and caring in everything that she does throughout And last but not least, our teacher, Ms. Gina Daigle. Ms. Daigle is the first to greet you with a smile in the morning and is one of the more thoughtful staff members that we have on our campus. She truly cares about the people that she's working with and has a spunky, delightful personality to go along with it. Ms. Daigle also works with our newcomers and EL students and works extremely hard to connect with her students in a way that makes them feel welcome and loved. She truly is one of those people on campus that whenever you come across her path, you can't help but have a much better day.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to recognize a few of the deserving staff and students here at Porter High School. These students and staff members are what make PHS great, place to work and be. At our school, our motto is "Expect excellence from every Spartan every day," and these are just a few of the people that reflect that. The first person we'd like to recognize tonight is Dr. Jimmy Now. Definitely the fan favorite tonight. Dr. Now is the band director of the Spartan Band. He's very dedicated to the success of the program along with his assistants. Dr. Now continues to put our band program on the map of Texas as we have now been to the state three consecutive times. Our place at state continues to improve as we finish 20th in the state out of 247 5A Dr. Now continues to push our students toward individual state recognitions as well. We have 19 students who will be competing for all-state band. Our band program is a shining example of excellence on our campus because of your passion and your dedication to our students. Next, we'd like to recognize our pair, Ms. Elba Elizondo. Ms. Elizondo is highly deserving of this recognition for her continuous hard work and relentless dedication to the Porter High School community. We can always count on her to assist students, parents, and staff members in whatever way is needed and at any moment. The past two years have been unique and have presented many unforeseen challenges. Mrs. Elizondo rose to each challenge that was presented and helped Porter High School stay afloat during hard times. Aside from her work ethic, she is always positive and does everything with a smile. Sometimes this is very hard to do, given the many issues and dilemmas that make their way into the AP's office, but she handles things with patience, ease, and grace. Quite honestly, the AP's office would be lost without her. She often does not receive the accolades that she deserves because people are not always aware of what always happens in the AP's office. So this is a great way to let her know how much her hard work is valued. We are extremely grateful to have Ms. Elizondo by our side at Porter High School. Our next person we'd like to recognize is Ms. Lupita Cortez. She is our custodian at Porter High School. She is a hard worker and is dedicated to her job. Ms. Cortez is very kind and is always willing to help where help is needed. If you have ever walked into our school, you will see how important it is to our custodians in keeping our building immaculate. Ms. Cortez cleans our front office area after school, and she makes sure that she is detailed in her work in keeping our front office clean. Mrs. Cortez, thank you for all that you do. Next is Ms. Lorena Flores, who works in child nutrition. Lorena is a great employee. She has been at Porter High School for over five years, is a very hard worker and a dedicated employee. She has three children in New Caney ISD and is a very active parent with all of her children. Lorena is in the manager training program for CN Department and hopes to become a manager next school year. This is coming from Mrs. Beard. She nominates her because she is a real go-getter and a very hard worker, a very fast learner, and again, very dedicated to her job here at Porter High School. She enjoys all students, and she is very deserving of this title. And now our students. Our first student is our student athlete, Ms. Kyla Heine. Porter High School would like to recognize Kyla Heine as our female student athlete. Kyla is a three-sport athlete here at Porter High School with her involvement in volleyball, track, and softball. This past volleyball season, Kyla was voted as MVP of the playoff-bound volleyball team by her coaches and her peers and received honors of first-team all-district by other district coaches. Kyla has broken school records in track and is our starting catcher in softball. After high school, Kyla will continue her sports and academics by playing softball at McLennan Community College in Waco. When you see Kyla in the hallway, she always has a smaller face and is willing to help others, although sometimes she's running late. Mrs. Heine does all of this and maintains a high level of academics at Porter High School. Congratulations on this honor, Ms. Heine. Our next student athlete is Mr. Joshua Evans Pickens. We would like to recognize Joshua Evans Pickens as he is a two-sport athlete here at Porter High School. He was on the baseball team last year that went three rounds into the playoffs, and he also plays on our football team. Last year, he was newcomer of the year, and this year he was voted as first-team all-district. Josh is a great example of what we want our student athletes to be. He is a hard worker and models what one should be doing through action. Josh is only a junior, so we are eager to see what the remainder of this school year and next year will bring. Thank you, Mr. Evans Pickens. We're missing our CTE student tonight, but I'm gonna go ahead and recognize her. Her name is Ms. Lena Conde Arajo. Lena is an indispensable member of the engineering program. She is a key member of the Girls Who Code... Oh, here she is. Sorry, I missed you. She is a key member of the Girls Who Code TSA, Best Robotics, and Samsung Solve for Tomorrow. Lena is profoundly gifted in programming and engineering and is the go-to student when a challenge arises with any activity or competition. Lena is driven, inquisitive, intelligent, and a team player. She is a shining star for our engineering program and sets the bar for all students who work with her, as she puts not only 100% but 200% to everything she does. She is a perfect example of a Spartan role model for CTE students. And last but not least is Mr. Ethan Ashay. Ethan is an all-star student, not only in academics, but as a musician and actor as well. Ethan has been in varsity choir since his freshman year and has been a reaching choir member for all four years of high school. Ethan has been in varsity choir since his freshman year and has been a reaching choir member for all four years of high school. Ethan consistently receives the highest rating at UIL solo and ensemble and is a leader in his section. Ethan was an alternate to the Texas All-State Choir in 2021. As you can see tonight, he was here singing with our corral, and he is also currently playing a lead role in our musical at Porter High School, The Wizard of Oz, as the Scarecrow. Ethan, thank you for all you do for Porter High School.
Okay, and now Mr. Pappas will present the Gingerbread House winners.
Hello, everybody. It's a fun night. We got the Porter High School Corral. We got some fun decorations. We got the battle line bake-off between Porter High School and New Caney High School. We have HEB here. I wanted to bring them up so they could show off what they brought for everybody. So HEB has partnered with us both years we've done this. This is the second year we've done it, and both times they jumped on board right away, and they even went above and beyond this year. So you can see whoever wins gets all this fun stuff from HEB, so thank you to HEB for doing that. We allowed the high schools to submit three gingerbread houses each. So unfortunately, there's probably an island of misfit gingerbread houses at both high schools just kind of sitting there that didn't make the cut. But these are the ones. If anybody here tonight has not gone up and seen it, please go up because the students did a great job. They stayed late. They worked really hard on it. The rules were it has to be completely edible, so there's no toothpicks, there's no Elmer's glue in there. It's all sugar-based. Everything can be eaten. And they're allowed to do it in teams of two or just by themselves. And so without further ado, if you are from Texas or if you're traveling through Texas, you can't say you actually went there unless you went to Whataburger. And tonight, the Whataburger Gingerbread House is the one that won. And I think one of the students here, Nicole, are you here? Nicole from Porter High School. We want to make sure she gets up here. There she is. Everybody, Nicole. Get up for Nicole from Porter High School. There we go. So you're going to get these wonderful things. We'll go take a photo. Were you not expecting me to call your name right now and bring you up here and embarrass you a little bit? It's okay. So anyways, come and say hello to the board, and then we'll move on to the other part. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for open forum. Item five on the agenda is closed... Oh, hang on a second. Let me back up. Sorry about that. We're going to go back to item two. I don't want to look at that.
We can discuss that later. Okay, tonight I would like to present the 2021 Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas for New Caney. This is based off the 19 and 20 data, though, even though it's a 2021 rating. We did receive an A Superior Achievement Rating this year. This is the 19th year that New Caney has received the highest rating possible. The goal of this Texas School First is to make schools not only accountable for student learning, but to achieve these results cost-effectively and efficiently. This year, the criteria had changed a little bit. There's 20 indicators now, so it's going to take a little bit longer to go through this than in the past. Indicators one, two, three, four, and five are critical indicators. If you get a no on that, you automatically receive an F rating, which is a substandard. Criteria number five is not being scored at this moment. Indicator number six revolves around the changes in fund balance over three years. If you decrease in your fund balance more than 25%, then you will not pass. We don't receive a number for this one. It's either you pass the indicator or you don't pass the indicator. If you do not pass that indicator, the only thing you can get is an 89. That's the highest score you can get, but we passed the indicator. Indicator number seven, it measures how long days after the end of the fiscal year that the school could operate without getting new revenue. That is on a point basis, and we received all 10 points for that. Indicator number eight measures whether the school district had sufficient short-term assets at the end of the fiscal year to pay for short-term liabilities, and we received 10 points there. Indicator number nine measures whether the district's general fund revenues exceeded expenditures, and we received 10 points on that as well. Indicator 10 measures whether the districts averaged less than 10% variance when comparing budgeted revenues to actual revenues for three fiscal years, and we received 10 points on that. Indicator number 11 measures whether the assets are greater than long-term liabilities, and we received 10 points on that as well. Indicator number 12 is whether or not the district has property value enough to pay debt for the current year. In 1920, we were still a state-funded district as well as used fund balance as a planned drawdown. We only received six out of the 10 points because currently at that time, property values were not enough to pay debt service. Indicator number 13 measures the percentage of district's budget that was spent on administration, and we received 10 points there as well. Indicator number 14 asks if the school district decreased the number of staff compared to the decrease in students. We did not have a decrease in students, therefore we received 10 points for that indicator. Indicator number 15 measures whether the district's ADA is within the allotted range of the biennium pupil projection that we submit to TEA. And five points were allowed for there, and we received all five points on that. Indicator number 16 measures the data quality in our PMS and whether there's a difference of more than 3% between what's in PMS and what's on our annual financial report. We received a... We passed the ceiling. That is a... You either pass or you fail on that one. If you fail, the most you can get is an 89, but we passed that one. Indicator 17 addresses the district's annual audit. And did the district have a clean audit with no material weaknesses and internal controls? That also has a ceiling. We passed that. If a district does not pass that, the most they can get on this is a 79. Indicator 18 addresses also the audit, but as it relates to federal funds and whether there were any material weaknesses or internal controls, and we received 10 points on that as well. Indicator 19 inquires whether the district posted everything that it was required to on its webpage, and the most points allowed for that is five, and we received all five points. Indicator number 20 inquires whether the school board discussed the tax rate and property values 120 days prior to adopting the budget. That is not being measured at the time, but it will be measured. Therefore, that means that we will have to discuss property values and have it open either in a board meeting or at a budget workshop starting in March. So in March, we'll have to discuss the values in order to pass this. If a school district does not do that, the best they can get on this rating is a B, so the best we could get is an 89. In your packet, you'll see the actual first rating. And then the one that we lost the four points on with the property values is also attached with the calculations. So we scored a 96 out of 100, which gave us a superior rating. There are some disclosures that are required to be discussed tonight. The first one is the superintendent's employment contract. That is posted on the district's website. Number two is any reimbursement paid on behalf of the superintendent or the board members. And remember, this is based off of 2019-20 data. So the previous superintendent is $15,401.89. Mixon, Harold, Perkel, Trout, Turner, Warwick, and Sharp, all of them were $245. Any outside compensation that was received by the superintendent, that's none. Any gifts received by the former superintendent or the board members, and that as well was none. And any business transaction between the school district and board members, and there were none for 1920 as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, item number five on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Government Code 551.082 for student discipline. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The board ended its closed meeting at 7:46. Item six on the agenda is reports and proposal by the board members. Mr. Turner will present an update from the construction committee meeting.
Yes, sir. We met this previous week to discuss West Fork High School update. West Fork is on schedule to open August of '22. Obviously, due to some of the current material shortages, it may be impacting that opening, so we are beginning to make plans to create where we can control areas in the building needed for the freshman class so that they can be prioritized in these specific locations. Additionally, due to supply chain issues, the district has adjusted the normal purchasing timelines for furniture, equipment supplies such as that, so we can be ready for our students August of '22. Porter Elementary site, new site has been cleared, and we are now in design meetings are being held as that is slated for August of 2024 for an opening. The Eagle Drive property across from Eagle Drive at the high school there in New Caney, the district has begun studies of drainage on the property just north of Eagle Drive. These drainage studies will be used to help with flooding issues that we've had in the past floods at New Caney High School and in our current administration building. Further bond updates. The district has started the demographic studies for PASA, which will be completed in April '22. The student growth data will be used for existing facilities, studies, datas to identify projects that will be included in the district's next bond program. The district has also met with financial advisor, Mr. Doug Witt with SAMCO, to begin discussions on bond capacity to meet the needs of this new program. And that's it from committee. We will meet again March '22.
Item seven on the agenda is superintendent's reports. Mr. Cal.
Yes, sir. I've got Ms. Heine here to give you all a staffing update for West Fork High School.
Mr. Turner, I know you're...
All right, good afternoon. As you guys know, planning and preparation are ongoing as we prepare to open West Fork High School to the inaugural class of 2026. Last week, we held an information meeting for parents, and we also had an opportunity to meet with students at Wood Ridge. There was a lot of excitement surrounding the opportunities ahead of our students. I've provided there a timeline for you that shows our plan to bring forth candidates for recommendations to begin in August of 2022. We are hopeful for the future of West Fork High School, and input from each department director as well as coordinators and district administrative staff has played an important role in the work that we've done so far. Staffing will be my most important priority this spring. This is actually when we will begin to see the ideas of West Fork High School begin to take shape and move toward actualized success. Just a few things to consider as we've put together our staffing plan is staffing is based on our projected enrollment of 409th grade students. We will offer a full slate of student-centered programs to enhance each student's unique experience in fine arts, athletics, and career and technical education. Student input has been collected from a career interest inventory, and we've started the process for selections to determine the specific program offerings that we need to offer in career and technical education. Student choice and parent input are key factors as these selections lay out the plan for a student's program of study. Recommendations for each position will also be made relative to the start of the upcoming competitive season. So for example, band, football, volleyball are considered first because they begin in August. It's also an important point to consider that those are the people that we need to start having conversations with as we begin ordering uniforms and making those decisions. As we bring on coaches and directors, it is our expectation that they will engage with students, parents, and coaches in the feeder programs to establish those programs' standards as the building block for their future growth in their respective programs. One of the things that we've also considered as we talk about staffing and as Mr. Turner has been talking about as far as being strategic about the layout of the building and making sure that we use the selected areas of the building to best supervise student movement, to prevent dispersment of students all over the building, and as we believe that this will also best utilize our support staff. In discussions with support services, child nutrition, and the chief of police, they have outlined specific plans... they have outlined specific plans to provide adequate support staff. Job postings will be available on the district website, and Mr. Calver has also requested information be included in our district newsletter to keep New Caney ISD staff informed of opportunities. I will also continue to keep principals updated in our future meetings. Safety of students and staff is above everything else. The recommended staffing the recommended staffing plan is what we need to provide adequate staff to supervise a multi-floor building and to make sure that we're able to maintain district protocols and expectations of student supervision. The document that you have and that I've outlined in front of you is, of course, not every single position, HC head coach, and then, of course, all of those, but it just in working with directors, identifying those prime-time hiring season, and then, of course, leading up to this, you will see, of course, that we are screening applicants, setting up interviews, and so these ends of these little timelines that you're looking at are dates that we're hoping to bring recommendations forth to the board for consideration. You guys have any questions? One more thing to each of you. You have pioneered the opening of West Fork High School. This building will forever continue to shape our community because of your collective commitment to provide challenging academic and career-focused programs to prepare our students for the reality of their future. Thank you for your continued support, and go Gators.
All right, next we've got Dr. Calver coming up to talk about potential governmental affairs committee that we wanted to create a difference of like a long walk from the back.
Okay. So this is about the development of a governmental affairs board committee, similar to how we do finance, instruction, and construction. A little bit of background or context, as the board knows, 2021 was a legislative year. The 87th legislature met in the spring. More than 700 education-related bills were filed during that session, depending on how you define education-related. More than 100 were passed. More than 350 have been passed related to education over the last three sessions. So we thought now was a good time to sort of formalize a process in our school district about how we analyze and understand the legislative process and how it's impacting New Caney ISD. So we developed a set of operating procedures. You have them in your packet. It's a draft. It's modeled on the finance, instruction, and construction of board committees. Really, the only distinction is in the purpose there. I won't read it to you, but it's about analyzing and understanding legislation and the legislative process and how it impacts the school district. Some potential activities in general for a committee like this, identifying and discussing issues that are important to the school district, maybe around a two-year legislative cycle, collecting information regarding legislation and how it impacts the district, advising the board, perhaps developing a set of priorities, sharing information with our representatives, our staff, and our community related to the legislative process. We feel like we're in a pretty good position to begin work early in 2022, as the board wishes, so if you have questions or thoughts or comments, we can take those during the rest of our planning process. And that's the. Well, I mean, that's I think that's up for discussion, but in the draft, we've identified some administrators and then a couple of board members, similar to the other committees. But that can change. Anything else?
Thanks, Dr. Calver.
And Mr. Mixon will be one of them.
Okay, item eight on the agenda is the consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, and consideration of approval for application for remote, homebound, virtual instruction waiver. Are there any further questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion has been moved and seconded. There will be no further discussion, but vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. Item nine on the agenda is consideration of 2022-2023 academic calendar presented by Ms. Shaw.
Good evening. Hi. I'm here to request your approval for our recommended academic calendar for 2223. On November 17th, at our regularly scheduled district-level advisory council meeting, Mr. Castleberry shared a couple of options with the teachers and parents and community members that were at the meeting, and explained a little bit about the process behind developing those calendars. Shortly thereafter, I sent out a survey to all of our instructional staff. 867 of our instructional staff voted and chose calendar A, 59%. Calendar B was 41%. And so we would like to recommend calendar A, which was the one that had the most votes from our instructional staff. Do y'all have any questions about that? Okay, we also went through a similar process with Infinity Early College High School. Their calendar is different than the rest of our schools, and so Mr. Castleberry shared some options with Ms. Beal, which Ms. Beal shared with her staff, and 90% of her staff voted on the calendar that's recommended for Infinity for the 2223 school year.
Yes, sir. This change order is asking your approval to have the general contractor install the metal shelving. Originally, the district was gonna do that, but we just felt it was in the best sense of time and budget to have the contractor do it at this time.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve CPR 66 to add metal shelving to the contract documents bond 2018 West Fork High? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consider the conveyance of drainage easements to Gregory Biddle and Martha DeRay Biddle or associated entities out of District's Crippen Elementary School Site presented by Mr. Calver.
Yes, sir. The Biddles are developing some land behind Crippen Elementary, and this is so that their development can tie into the drainage system that is located behind our school. Asking for approval for that.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Item 13 on the agenda is consideration of approval for resolution to discontinue participation with TRS Active Care effective September 1, 2022, presented by Ms. Jackson.
Hi. I'm back. Good evening. So this is a follow-up of our discussion that we had in November concerning our request to leave TRS Active Care for 2223, so I am asking for your consideration, allowing New Caney ISD to opt out of TRS Active Care for the 2223 school year. We do, in fact, I actually have. He had a TSHBP. He has already provided us with rates. We currently have them as an alternative plan, but we are going to he's offering two other plans directly from Etna that'll be that'll mirror TRS Active Care, so we have those rates. They've also agreed to if for some reason TRS comes back with really low rates, they have agreed to lower their rates to match TRS Active Care. No, to the district, no, sir.
Not employees, yes?
The rates will be higher than they are currently this year, which they would have been anyway if we stayed with TRS Active Care. TRS Active Care is proposing at least a 5% increase. That is based on what they know as of today. With, you know, the rest of the year hasn't played out. Once all the other districts start opting out, from what we understand, Splendor is opting out, Umbel's opting out, Goose Creek is opting out, so once some of the larger districts start pulling out, you know, we don't know what that will do to TRS and its sustainability.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution to discontinue participation with TRS Active Care effective September 1, 2022? Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. Vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 14 on the agenda is discuss the potentially and potentially take action regarding student expulsion of field. Anybody that's not participating in this at this time can leave, so we can go into closed session.